Who are going to make representations today? Okay, let's then get started. I would then like to welcome all of you as the attendees, as well as various stakeholders following us through the various live streaming platforms to this Petron Pipeline Subcommittee Public Hearing on the Transnet Soc Limited Tariff Application for the Petroleum Pipeline System for the 2025-26 as well as the 2026-27 financial years. My name is Mr. Muzin Kise. I'm the full-time regulator member, primarily responsible for Petron Pipelines Regulation. I will be the chairperson of this public hearing and I would like to introduce the other members of the panel, who are Madame Nomalanga Stolle. Advocate Stolle is the Chief Executive Officer of NERSA, as well as the PPS member, PPS for Petron Pipelines Subcommittee. Advocate Stolle?
Thank you, Chairperson, and good morning. Good morning to everyone, members, and also those that have joined us for this public hearing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I also have got Madame Nonfundo Maseti, who is the full-time regulator member, primarily responsible for pipelife regulation and a member of the PPS. Madame Maseti? Madame Maseti could be muted. Okay, we'll then proceed whilst Madame Maseti is resolving technical challenges. I would like to then proceed by stating that this public hearing was duly advertised in the following newspapers: The Maycuri, Cape Town Times, Bielt, Isolazo and The Star. It was also posted on our website and it is held in accordance with the Energy Regulator Act, in which affected parties are given an opportunity to submit their views and present relevant facts and evidence to the energy regulator. This hearing is governed by the NERSA Rules on Public Hearings, which can be summarized as follows. One, all parties will be required to make their presentations under oath. Two, presenters have been allocated twenty minutes each. Three, only members of the panel may ask questions to the presenters. However, members of the public may forward their questions to patients.masongane@nersa.org.za and the panel will decide on how to deal with those questions. Madame Masangane, if may also please assist by putting your email address on the chat. And then, fourthly, should presenters wish to present information they consider confidential, the panel will make a ruling on whether to close the hearing or to have the information submitted in writing. The recording of this hearing will be done through our recording system and will also be a live audio streaming on NERSA's X page, previously known as Twitter, with the handle @nersa_zza, all in capital letters. This will be the official record of this meeting. The house rules for this meeting are: One, please switch your cellphones to silent mode. Two, please ensure that your mic and video are switched off at all times unless you are making a presentation.
Sure, it's not...
May, may please mute. And then, thirdly, please use the chat responsibly to contribute to a meaningful discussions throughout the public hearing session. We have the following two presenters for the public hearing. Each presenter will be given twenty minutes to present. However, noting that SASSON has got a consultant accompanying them with a separate presentation, we will allocate an extra ten minutes for them to make it thirty minutes. I've got Madame Tanuja, who is from Transnet Soc Limited, and Mr. Rudy Histerman, who is from SASSON. I would like to get Madame Tanuja Naidu to step forward. And you may switch your video on, ma'am.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Do you have any objections to taking the oath?
No, sir.
Please raise your right hand and affirm the following: Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, sir.
For the record, please state your name, company and designation during.
My name is Tanuja Naidu. I am the Chief Financial Officer at Transnet Pipelines.
Thank you very much. We will then proceed with the presentation. But what we are going to do at the end of your presentation, you may just get you a piece of paper and be able to note the questions, because it's going to be a round of questions from the members of the panel to which then you respond at the end. You may augment your responses by way of writing to NERSA within the next seven days to be appreciated. So your twenty minutes starts now with your presentation.
Thank you, sir. I will just share my presentation. I'm trusting it can be seen by all, sir.
Yes. Yes.
So a very good morning to Advocates Stolle, regulatory members and all public stakeholders. As indicated, my name is Tanuja Naidu. I am the Chief Financial Officer at Transnet Pipelines. I am joined today by our Chief Executive, Mr. Sebongi Senikati. He is online. The Head of Security, Mr. Richard Suraj, and our Head of Business Development, Mr. Crease Nika. Thank you for this opportunity to allow Transnet Pipelines to present its 26-27 and 27-28 multi-year Petroleum Pipeline System Tariff Application. In filing our application, we were guided by the eight method, eight version of the tariff methodology. And in so doing, we arrived at a revenue requirement for the 25-26 financial year of 8.7 billion and the 26-27 financial year of 8.6 billion. Apologies, Chair, I think I said 26-27 and 27-28. It's the 25-26 and 26-27. The application includes a volume forecast of approximately 15.7 billion liters for the 25-26 financial year and 15.8 billion for the 26-27 financial year. The allowable revenue applied for the 25-26 financial year represents a twenty percent increase from the 24-25 reason for decision. And that's primarily, Chair, if I could refer the committee to the table on the presentation right now, primarily as a result of the deferred AR. The actual decision for the 24-25 year was about 8 billion and 800 million was deferred into the RAB, as well as the fact that the clawback, there was a clawback in that year that essentially is no longer in the 25-26-27 year, which I will speak to just now. But primarily on the 24-25 versus the 25-26, if that 800 million was removed, or wasn't removed, the increase will be around 8.7%, Chair. I just wanted to indicate that to the committee. And then the revenue requirement for the 26-27 year is actually a decline. And I refer to the clawback issue that obviously in the multi-year application, we have no view now of anything that could happen in this year that's not yet complete, which is the 24-25 year that could lead to subsequent clawbacks. So that's fundamentally why there's a decrease in the 26-27 application, Chair. Moving on, I just wanted to indicate to the committee that in the RAB for the 25-26 and 27, 26-27 years, we have deferred for the 23-24 financial year 2.8 billion of revenue into the RAB and 800 million, as I've just discussed, for the 24-25 decision, Chair. So that's primarily the numbers that have gone into the regulatory asset base. I think of note what we have to explain to the committee is that the separate R tanks which were operationalized in May 2023 were actually now only brought in at 434 million, as opposed to the forecasted value of over 700 million at that time, Chair. And I think we have explained in our answers to NERSA that that's primarily as a result of a significant amount that we have impaired and not allowed into the regulatory asset base for these assets. As indicated by NERSA, they are busy with the investigations around the volume sharing risk mechanism. And consequently, we have not included any part of that matter into this tariff application. The weighted average cost of capital has been driven by the parameters and the data as provided by NERSA. There's just been a marginal increase in the WAC for the 25-26 financial year, driven by the cost, the real cost of debt. The real cost of debt has increased slightly as a result of the lower CPI for that period, a marginal change, a significant change in the CPI from the 24-25 decision and the forecasted CPI for the 25-26 financial year. With regard to the 26-27 number, Chair, a marginal decrease in the WAC as a result of a lower forecasted cost of debt, because we've used the same data for the two financial years. When it comes to expenses for the 25-26 year, we have reduced, or expenses have increased marginally from the 25-24-25 decision by 2.39%, Chair. And in the 26-27 application versus the 25-26 numbers, there's an increase of 7.73%. And that's driven by the security cost that generally increases by 10%. Electricity that increases generally far more than in the inflation rate, Chair, and you know that's generally in the double digits. And then we have a certain amount of maintenance plan for that year, mostly on infrastructure aspects of the business that has to be done. The clawback, we've applied for a 394 million clawback. The largest factor in that clawback is the revenue element. And that's as a result of the non-materialization of volumes in the 23-24 financial year. We have not applied for an air factor requirement as we do not qualify for it. On the volume side, Chair, we've applied for 15.7 billion for the 25-26 year and 15.8 billion. Volumes have been a challenge. At the time of filing, we had a latest estimate of 15 billion 599 million liters for the 24-25 year. And using, generally what we use is the GDP growth rate less one. The numbers that we had filed for is 15.7 billion and 15.8 billion for the two financial years respectively, Chair. We have had discussions with, I believe I can still call them Department of Minerals and Energy Chair, but the now Department of Minerals and Petroleum Resources, who have indicated that the economic environment is still challenging. Volume recovery has been slow. There has been some challenges around, you know, certain of our customers and what's happening in the refinery, Chair, in the refineries, I should say. And that's also impacted volumes other than just demand. On the tariff side, we've always provided NERSA with the tariffs for information purposes based on the calculated allowable revenue filed for. And of note is that we have rationalized the distances based on the various routes that are now decommissioned, Chair, as you know, as part of the decommissioning of the old pipelines. And then my final slide for this morning, Chair, is just on the security side. We just, I know it's been a matter that's been of concern to NERSA over the years. I think what we would just like to highlight here as a business is that we have made significant strides in reducing the security incidents on the pipelines. And that's been informed by our very risk-based security strategy that we have put in place, that includes tactical task teams on the line, drones, as well as patrolling via helicopters, et cetera, Chair. And as the criminals adapt, we find that we about to also react and adapt to ensure that we can combat whatever they are doing. So on this table, on this table, we've shown you two aspects: actual incidents over a three-year period and attempted incidents over a three-year period, the 22-23 years, 23-24 and 24, the current year, Chair, 24-25. And you will see that the red blocks actually show what is happening in the current year versus the last two years. And there's been a significant improvement. And that's a direct result of the strategy that we have in place. It's very same trend you can see, Chair, on the attempted side, attempted incidents. So, and that will bring me to the end of my presentation, Chair. And I'm ready to take questions.
Thank you very much, Madame Naidu. You have saved us some minutes. I would then invite, I would like to invite Madame Maseti and Madam, and Advocate Stolle, who are part of the panel, to ask questions. Please just note the questions for now and then you give a chance to respond. Madame Maseti, over to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairperson, for the opportunity to ask questions of clarity. And I would like to also thank Miss Naidu for the presentation. It's a bit short. I was hoping that you will also touch on other aspects of the application. Let me start with the aspect that you have not touched on, which is the treatment of depreciation and the approach that Transnet has taken. Just to understand, in the application where you are asking for accelerated depreciation for the tightlining, if you can please clarify the reasons, the rationale, and what impact have you assessed, especially from the viewpoint of burdening the ratepayers with the cost that would result from depreciated, sorry, accelerated depreciation? So it's important that you provide details or particulars of the impact of that and also showing to the regulator the, what you call, affordability aspect, even for the ratepayers. That becomes important because it may well be not a cost that the ratepayers or the users of the infrastructure will be able to absorb and also make it uncompetitive for their own processes. So that's one angle of looking at it. You must also just indicate and convince the regulator as to why should the regulator allow accelerated depreciation for tightlining? Being the asset that was never part of the original scope of the project. There was a scope creep here. And regulators must take that into consideration when there is this scope and a creep, especially when it results to a significant amount and a new asset that was never part of the original project. And now, few years down the line, there's a request again to the regulator when there was a cost imposed, a cost that should not have been there. And we know that there were issues that then led to that cost being included. Now, again, few years down the line, the regulator is requested to accelerate depreciation of that asset. And we know the cost that will result from accelerated depreciation. Why should the regulator allow for this, given those considerations? If you can take us through that. The other point that I would like to come to is, you know, things that are within Transnet's control, which is the issue of the volumes. I would like to understand what Transnet is doing on its side in terms of measures to stimulate volumes and sales, basically sales. What is it that Transnet is doing? You need to provide some assessment that Transnet has done from its side. Looking at, for instance, you look at your bigger customers that are utilizing the infrastructure and, you know, getting the volumes through your infrastructure. Now, to understand from them, as you are bringing increases in cost, because it might not look good when the costs are increasing. But when you're looking at the volumes, the volumes are not increasing as much as the cost. That obviously, from an economic regulator's point of view, you know, one would frown at it and would like to get some accountability from Transnet as to how should the regulator grant such an increase if then the licensee does not show any effort or measures to stimulate sales? That becomes important. So if you can please touch on that and provide us with any necessary details as to why should we view that as efficient? Why should we view that as a prudent and efficient operation such that then the regulator should compensate for such a cost? That is not coming out. We need Transnet to come forward with that. Again, it's important for Transnet to reflect on the demand analysis that you have done from your side as you bring this application. Because it's important when we regulate the market that at least we are not far removed from the reality in the market, what is actually happening. And that also is linked to the fact that costs are increasing, what is happening on the demand. And that will be the economic reasoning that we'll have to apply in assessing this application. And would like Transnet to come forward and provide us with information from their side as we are also going to apply our due diligence, applying economic reasoning to this effect. If you do have economic evidence to support the demand, if you are focusing demand growth, that then will justify your cost increase, please provide us with that detail. The third point that I would like to raise relates to maintenance costs that are projected and Transnet is requesting. Can you please, because obviously from my side as a member, I don't have information on whether or not Transnet has submitted its maintenance cost as part of this application. Transnet can clarify if it has submitted maintenance plan that will talk to its maintenance philosophy that it will undertake during the two-year period for this application. That's the second thing. And also, to then get into the increases in the cost of maintenance. And that should also then talk to how you are going to prioritize and execute the maintenance and the scoping of this maintenance so that we can understand whether those costs are costs that are justified, are efficient and that would benefit the users during the period of this application. If that, those specific details spelt out can be responded to so that we can be able to understand whether there is a justifiable reason for the cost that I requested. Lastly, Chairperson, I would like to touch on the clawback. The clawback, it has been an issue from our side. And sometimes it's not necessarily money that one is entitled to, but because there are issues of forecasts that are not good enough. And therefore, they will result in some shortfall of some sort. But even when that happens, we don't see improvement in terms of volumes going through the pipeline. So when there is no growth, but then one gets entitled simply because of the method of calculating these things. And when the forecast assumptions that underlie the forecast are not good enough, then one will then say, oh, this is what we anticipated and this is what was achieved and therefore there is this variance. And that variance must therefore be rewarded or the cost be rewarded because it has not been achieved. That is an issue. And I think also from our side, it's something that we would like to look at carefully, but want to get your view on clawback. Because it has been an amount that finds itself in the revenue space. And it is not always an efficient cost to be recovered and to be paid by the ratepayers if one takes into account the issues that I've touched on. Chairperson, I said that was the last, but I wanted to bring in the fact that we all know the issue of the cost overruns associated with this project, the issue of scope creep as evidenced by the tightlining asset. The fact that the timing of completion of this project is also an issue. And being an issue, it also talks to not just inflationary pressures that will affect the cost, but also the market changes because the cost of the materials, the labor and everything, all of the other costs of obtaining, of procuring the material that is required for the completion of this project will also go up. And to whose detriment? To the detriment of the ratepayers, of the users of the system. Now, having said this, what will be Transnet's reaction to this? For at least the regulator to actually say, we think that you are operating efficiently. We think that you are entitled to this cost or we can allow you to earn this cost because you have convinced us. What will make us do that, given the points that I've just pointed out? And then very last point, Chairperson, is for Transnet to indicate to us what is it that, or measures that they are taking or implementing or intend to implement in order to cut their own inefficiencies or address their own inefficiencies, of which efficiencies some of them have touched on, regarding the way in which this project has been managed and executed and the cost that associated with the way in which the project has been executed. So if that can also be part of the response from Transnet in trying to improve inefficiencies, thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you, Madame Maseti. Advocate Stolle?
Thank you, Chairperson, and thanks to Miss Naidu for your presentation. Chair, I've got just two questions. They relate to costs. And I have noted that on Slide six, Transnet indicated that there is a decline in terms of theft incidences. And based on that decline, Chairperson, I just want to find out as to what is Transnet's plan to ensure that the costs remain minimized in the application? If they can demonstrate that to us? And the other one was on the legal cost. Does Transnet, or is it Transnet? Does Transnet, uh, or is it Transnet's view that the legal cost should be borne or passed on to Transnet, uh, customers? Chair, those are my two questions relating to the costs. Thanks.
Thank you very much, uh, uh, panel members. Um, from my side, maybe, um, Madam Naidi, if you may just, uh, I've got just three issues because, uh, my colleagues have already touched on, 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 um, issues of concern. Uh, one, on volumes. Uh, what initiatives have you put in place to improve volumes? What are the barriers or challenges and proposals made to some amount same? You know, I, I know that you could be talking to, uh, your own company's uh, strategic, uh, uh, maneuvering, which could be confidential. I think you can just, uh, talk, uh, high level and ensure that you then provide a routine, um, augmentation of your response, uh, within the next, uh, seven days. Uh, so that you, we can get to understand your efforts in moving towards being an efficient, uh, operator, such that you in, you, you increase the denominator of the rate of return equation. Right. Secondly, uh, just like to, to know your, your, your being amenable to reopeners uh, after the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six financial year, you know, as we move along and not just continue as if nothing has changed, in case there are certain things to change. And then two, it's also, uh, a tariff path post, uh, this application, uh, noting that there are still other, um, you know, assets that you are going to, to put in place. And, and related to that, uh, from my side is to say, when it comes to the security, uh, uh, when product theft, but what are the, who, would, would, would you think, uh, that it is a, a fair, uh, 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 approach to have hundred percent of those cost, uh, uh, those cost, uh, 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 recovered via the tariff? Or, or it should only be a, a percentage, noting that in a unregulated competitive market, you would not, uh, uh, charge the consumer to, uh, uh, double because you had to double the number, I mean, half the number of, um, your, you, the commodities that you are selling being stolen. You know, I'm saying, if you can just, uh, 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 look at that. And then lastly, uh, if you are going to be amenable to some smoothing in line with the methodology and also, uh, noting that you've got an, an increase first and then a decreases, very slight decrease, uh, whether you'll be amenable to, uh, smoothing and, and maybe to get your views thereon. I, I'll leave it at that now. And you may respond if you, you have got someone else to assist you in your responding. Um, I think it would, we'll have to serve them in, uh, but over to you, ma'am, for now.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, I'll start with Miss Masetti's questions. Thank you, Miss Masetti, uh, for the questions. Uh, with regard to the depreciation on the tight lining, um, firstly, in terms of the depreciation methodology, Chair, we, we depreciate our assets over the useful life of the asset to the business. And that's generally, uh, reevaluated or determined. We have independent, um, valuers that come through and let us know what the useful life of the assets are. And, uh, that is, uh, a document that we also make available to NERSA, uh, in our tariff applications. So that's the method- methodology that, uh, we depreciate over the useful life of the asset. With regard to the tight lining, um, and yes, maybe for the benefit, uh, of, uh, those that may not know, the tight lining came into being, Chair, because our TM1 tank farm failed. The building of the tanks failed. And therefore, uh, with the, uh, advent of having to decommission the DJP, um, uh, we had to come up with a plan to keep the country wet, to ensure security of supply. Um, and therefore, we care to come up with a tight lining solution, Miss Masetti, which essentially, um, it costed us about a hundred and, just under two hundred million, around a hundred and eighteen million, so that we can, um, tie in directly from the clients into, into the NMPP, the trunk line, so that we can still continue with operations in the country. So, um, it wa- and it was always meant to be an interim solution until we can actually get the tank farm up and running, um, which, um, which is currently now in progress, the construction of the tank farm. So, um, it, it is an asset or an intermediate asset that was used to ensure that we meet our mandate as Transnet and that, uh, the security of supply in the country was protected. On that basis, you know, uh, we felt that we, it is, it is prudent for us to actually recover the cost of that a hundred and eighteen million. Uh, the reason that we have now, uh, expedited or accelerated depreciation on it is that, um, now that the tank, uh, tank project has recommenced and we plan to operationalize the assets, the tank farm around twenty twenty-eight, um, we've accelerated depreciation and to just give, uh, give you some comfort, uh, well, the, the value of that accelerated depreciation, Miss Masetti, it's around twenty-three million. Um, we've had to accelerate it to twenty twenty-eight so that, uh, because that asset will no longer be in use once the tank farm come into operation. So in a nutshell, um, that is why we have got this as a recovery mechanism, the recovery on and off that asset. Um, because as Transnet, we believe that, uh, the country, uh, the inland market has benefited uh, from the use of that asset. In all fairness, yes, it's because our tank farms fa- a tank farm failed and we were decommissioning the DJP. Therefore, we had to me, uh, have an alternate mechanism, uh, to supply the co- to supply the inland market, uh, to meet the mandate of the country. Um, moving on to the next question. Uh, what are we doing to stimulate volumes and sales in the country? Um, Madam Masetti, we have undertaken, our, our business development team has undertaken a study. We're in process of appointing a service provider to exactly tell us, uh, what is happening in the country from a demand perspective regarding fossil fuels. Um, uh, you know, why, uh, where the volumes are going, how much is on the road, et cetera. Um, and, and, and from our side, we do have certain initiatives, uh, also to answer the chair, uh, that we have, uh, that we are putting in place, uh, which we will submit to you in writing within seven days, Chair. Uh, you know, to, to, to give you some comfort of how we're trying to stimulate, um, uh, stimulate volume growth in the pipeline without compromising, uh, legislation or, or, or the governance around regulation. So that is in, 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 in process. So we will give you a written comment on that one, uh, Chair. Uh, with regard to whether a maintenance plan has been provided, Miss Masetti, no, a maintenance plan has not been provided for the two years, but we are happy within the seven days to provide the regulator with the maintenance plans for those two years. Uh, regarding the clawback, uh, yes, uh, it is a function of the methodology in terms of forecasts and what is actually, um, what actually materializes at the end of the day, um, Miss Masetti. And currently, we are following the ambits of the methodology, um, and, and, and filing as such. Um, and, but we do understand the fact that, uh, a significant clawback for the year of is with, with regard to unmaterialized volumes. Uh, so as a, as a licensee, we do acknowledge that. Uh, the overrun on the NMPP project, um, I think, and, and what has been done to manage, I'm just combining, uh, the two questions together because it relates to the same project. Um, once the NMPP, well, the phase that is complete has, uh, uh, you know, um, was, uh, well, once the phase has been completed, phase one, we did conduct, uh, a prudency assessment. The regulator did conduct a prudency res- uh, assessment on those costs. And, um, if I remember clearly, it's around five point four billion or somewhere around there. Uh, I think Chair, you would know the number a little bit. I don't have it offhand, but I can give it in a written response. That was disallowed by the four point three, four point three billion that the regulator did disallow on, uh, in his prudency review of the NMPP project. Um, so, uh, and, and then from a Transnet perspective, even over and above that, we have disallowed a further one point nine, approximately one point nine billion. I will in my written response give you the exact numbers, Miss Masetti, regarding this project. So all in all, uh, the four point three and the one point nine billion has not been allowed into the regulatory asset base on this project based on assessments of efficiency in the running of the project now. And, uh, so, um, and further, to ensure that we don't, uh, that the mistakes that were made are not recurring, the mistakes that were made that resulted in this disallowance, both from a prudency and a Transnet impairment perspective. We have done lessons learned on the project. Um, we have put in levers, which we can give you a detailed submission of the levers that have now been put in place to ensure that there's no recurrence, uh, uh, of what happened, uh, in the past, ma'am. Uh, moving on to the questions from Advocate Satole. Uh, the decline on the theft incidents and the cost, uh, the cost aspect of it. Um, ma'am, you know, unfortunately, um, there is no, uh, correlation between the cor- well, the, the correlation between the cost and the reduction in incidents is actually opposite to what we generally see. Generally, when we see things are good, then we can actually reduce. But here, we have to keep the pressure up. Uh, it's the di- it's as a result of the direct pressure that we are putting that has resulted in the decline of the incidents. As soon as you remove the pressure, uh, w- we are advised that the incidents would actually, uh, start increasing again. So that is the conundrum that we find ourselves in as a business. Uh, until we have put in the preventative measures, which is capital projects, uh, that will now prevent, uh, you know, um, the perpetrators from getting to the pipeline or we are able to react, uh, uh, far more or putting technology where we can react far more quicker, uh, to, uh, to the incidents. Uh, we will, uh, from what I understand, it, it's not possible yet to actually, um, uh, uh, reduce the pressure that the teams that we have, uh, the kind of strategy that is currently on, uh, uh, that's resulting in this, uh, in the reduction. So, um, so that, that's the conundrum that we find ourselves in, in that regard. A- and with regard to legal costs, ma'am, uh, that's a, that's a very interesting question. Um, I, I don't really have an answer, uh, for you off the cuff of whether legal costs should be allowed. Uh, but other than the fact that it is a function of business, uh, you know, we will be sued and we will sue people in the course of business. And it's a cost that businesses incurred, incur. Um, but I, I, what I would propose to NERSA on the issue of costs, both on the security side, the legal costs, while on the NMPP, the prudency assessment has already been done, is that, um, we could all, uh, we are, we are quite open to a prudency assessments on the operating cost side, ma'am, that was actually done previously many years ago as well, to actually assess the efficiency of the costs that are, are currently being incurred. And as trans said, we would welcome that. To just give you the regulator as well, a sense of comfort that there's no bells and whistles, uh, in what we are doing at the moment. And the costs that we are incurring are being incurred necessarily for the objective, uh, that they are being incurred. Um, to go on to the Chair's questions, um, I, I, Chair, I've already touched on the volume initiatives. We will give you, uh, the stuff in writing. Um, on the security costs of whether it is to be hundred percent recovered, Chair, uh, as I think I've already discussed it, um, you know, these are costs necessarily being incurred. Um, and what we believe prudently incurred, but if you conduct a prudency assessment, you may come to another, uh, 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 you know, uh, conclusion, Chair, but that's your prerogative, Chair. Uh, you know, we believe that they are being prudently incurred for the benefit, um, of the inland market, Chair, um, and, uh, for all, uh, all stakeholder, stakeholders involved in this, uh, in, in the activity, the ultimate activity, the, the downstream, upstream, uh, a- activity, Chair, as well as, uh, the final destinations. Um, smoothing, last question, Chair, uh, on the smoothing, Chair, as we've indicated in the tariff application, we are very, uh, uh, aligned with the mechanisms that NERSA has used in the past, uh, to smooth, Chair, which is involved, uh, deferring uh, into the RAB as well as deferring revenue, uh, down the line. So we have been very comfortable with both of those, uh, deferring mechanisms, Chair. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Naidi, for the, for the, for the responses. But I think, uh, in your, in your written response, if you may please just augment the issue of fairness or looking at it from the consumers, consumer interests, uh, point of view on the accelerated depreciation on the tight lining assets. Uh, since when the, the, the TM1 tanks come into operation, they, they, they won't be serving any purpose per se. Um, and, 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 uh, at the same time, they had to put, to be put in place because of a failure from, uh, Transnet's side. So, so if you can just look at that. And also, when you, when you can also augment on legal cost, because they must come as a, a, a because the, the important thing is in line of direct service to, has to consumers, you know. Uh, because you cannot, uh, uh, be doing something of your own, having your own agreements and all of that. And then you let those paying consumers, uh, uh, foot the bill for that. I think, if you can just note that. And then, uh, the third thing is on the, we, we know the issue of prudency assessment and that the prudency assessment was for a period to twenty nineteen. And then, um, further prudency, I, I mean, assessment will have, will need to be done. And your cooperation with the, uh, technical team on the regulator's side, from the regulator's side will then assist in concluding, uh, that aspect and, and, and really, uh, revisit, uh, these figures. Okay? We, we're looking forward to you providing the, the information as promised within the next, uh, uh, seven days. Uh, members, I, I, I want us to, to, to step off from Transnet, but if you've got any follow-up questions, you may, you may raise your hands.
Uh, thank, thank you, Chairperson, uh, I'll be quick. Uh, Chairperson, um, the, the question on maintenance, just to flag the fact that, uh, Transnet has not responded to that question adequately. Yes, you just mentioned the, the fact that the maintenance plan was not submitted and you will submit it, that you did not touch or acknowledge at least the other components, uh, of that question with, with, with regards to the justification of cost, your philosophy of what you are going to do during the period for you to be asking for the money that you've asked for. So if you can provide those details and then link them also to the prioritization of, um, certain aspects of maintenance. So that did not come through, Chairperson, if it can come also in writing. Uh, the other issue, Chairperson, I think Transnet seems to be emphasizing prudency. But remember that, um, the regulator compensates efficient cost. Yes, there will be compensation of prudently, uh, in cat cost, but it does not replace or substitute efficiency. So the efficiency consideration or efficiency test will still be considered. So his part is, is an issue that Transnet has not, uh, touched on. If that can also, Chairperson, be, uh, be responded to. And lastly, Chair, if, uh, Transnet can also confirm and provide us with, um, information showing that there is no duplication or, uh, double dipping, uh, insofar as, um, the, um, the other operational costs are concerned, particularly the employee cost, given the fact that there will be employees, um, same employees responsible for petroleum pipelines, but some responsible for, um, gas pipelines. So we do want to make sure that, uh, there's no double dipping when it comes to that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I hope Madam Naidi have noted that for, for, for the written, uh, augmentation of your, of your responses. Uh, with regard to, to, to maintenance, I, I take it also that you would cover the period beyond the, the two years, from the point of view that we don't want you to overload this period. And then you find that there is some this period and then you find that there is something that you could do in subsequent years, but you don't do it. Uh, but instead you overload, noting also the, 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 the financial, uh, the, the economic climate uh uh at this juncture. Uh, and, and I would also request you to also provide information regarding the comparison of um the, the various, the, the, the various modes of transport, but in particular uh pipeline versus road, pipeline versus uh 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 rail. Uh, consider this in the context of, of also increasing volumes. Uh, because when we've got a, a higher tariff, it might uh tend to increase uh, you know, it will increase the price plus it would also lead to the migration of volumes to, to, to road, which has got other the uh impact. So if you may just please provide that. Uh, yeah, and consider all aspects uh 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 in, 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 in that pertain to that comparison. You, you may touch base with uh the technical team, uh, Madam Bogo and them, to be able to do that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
So maybe just for record, you would be able to provide that information as requested?
Yes, Chair, we will endeavor to our best to provide everything within the seven days.
Thank you very much. That is highly appreciated. We'll then uh step off from uh transnet and then move to um Sasso. Uh, I would like to get, if I may just get Miss the Histerman to step forward.
Good afternoon, Chair, and good afternoon to the panel. Um, I'm Rudy Histerman. I'm from.
No, you may, you may just uh uh stop there. Uh, uh, we, please, if you may just activate your, your, your video.
Should be able to see us. It, it is active. We, we, we can see it. Um, the video on, um.
Oh, I can see you. No, 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 I was, I was looking at the Histerman who did the instead of the consulting room G three.
Okay, uh, apologies, Chair. Um, we've got our presentation on on the, um, on the machine with my name on it, but I'm sitting in a consulting room here with the Advocate Turner, who will do the bulk of our presentation.
Okay, then. Um, do you have any objections in taking the oath?
I do not.
Okay, may please raise your right hand and affirm the following. Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you. For the record, please state your name, company and designation, Darren.
I'm Rudy Histerman. I am the head of um regulation for markets um at, at Sasso. The broader Sasso Energy, um, but particularly for Sasso Oil.
Thank you. Who else is going to, to be presenting with you?
Uh, Chair, this is Advocate Duncan Turner, A F C. Um, I'll be making submissions on behalf of Sasso. I won't be giving evidence. And so I, I won't be taking the oath.
Okay, uh, that is accepted. Um, I was thinking of making one continuous uh presentations from your side with your consultant. Is it?
Mister Lipschitz may be online. Um, he may be available.
Yeah, hi. Hi there. Good aft- good morning, everyone.
Yeah, now we see you, uh, Mister Lipsy. Um, if you may just lift your, 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 just raise your, 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 your right hand and uh if you don't have any objections in taking the oath?
Actually, uh, for religious reasons, I'd prefer to take the affirmation, if that's okay.
Okay, uh, raise your hand then and affirm uh the following. Uh, do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I affirm that, yes.
For the record, please state your name, company and designation, Darren.
It's Robert Lipschitz and I work uh with Genesis Analytics.
So, uh, let's then move uh to the presentation. You are going to be, I've given opportunity to make uh the two presentations in series and then we'll come at the end with the questions to, to all of you. Uh, may you please just beam your presentation, uh, Mister Histerman?
Thank you, Chair. I will, I will, um, definitely, just, just a second. Let the screen you will share.
Looks at, just put it on, on, on a presentation mode.
There we go. Chair, is, is, is that an order? Can, can everybody see it?
All in order, you may proceed your thirty minutes. Both of you, how you dice it up is up to you. It starts right now. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, good afternoon, Chair, and to the C E O and to the rest of the committee. Um, the written submissions were made by Sasso on the twenty seventh of November. Those are quite extensive submissions. They include written legal submissions, submissions of reports prepared by Genesis with detailed calculations and detailed factual information. And the answers that Sasso have provided to the, to N A S A's questions are included in an annexation to that submission. So we would recommend to the committee that, that some time be spent with those written submissions as we can't deal with the detail in the oral presentations. Then today, there are two presentations, the one that you see on screen now and then the one that Mister Lipschitz will deal with in providing what Sasso submits is the solution to the um, the problem that Sasso has identified and articulated. Chair, we've dealt briefly with the uh litigation because we saw that it was dealt with in transnet's application, but it was redacted and we're not sure what um detail was included there. What we want to highlight is that Sasso and Total have secured a judgment for approximately ten billion rand against transnet this year arising from prior tariff um charges. And the failure to have acknowledged the existence of what was known as the variation agreement. Now, the variation agreement was a particular agreement that dealt with the problem that arises, the transport yield problem that arises as a result of having an inland refinery. Now, there appears to be a belief that because the agreement is gone, the problem disappears. The problem does not disappear. The problem was dealt with by the variation agreement and was, and as a result of the refusal to implement it, there's now a ten billion rand judgment with interest accruing at approximately one point two billion rand per year while it remains unpaid. We, we have um tried to uh convince transnet of the problem and we had to go to court. We've tried to convince N A S A of the problem and there are currently two review applications dealing with previous decisions by N A S A which postdate the termination of the variation agreement. The position after the variation agreement is that the variation agreement no longer creates that um protection. And now Sasso must rely on the, on the legislation. And the legislation does provide, does protect its interests. Now, there is currently awaiting, awaiting judgment. And if the judgment is granted by the uh Miss, Madam Justice Opperman in the transnet action, the amounts that Sasso has paid under protest will also be recoverable. And so the amount owed will be more than the ten billion rand. Now, what we want to do is try to stop the bleeding and to ask try, N A S A to look carefully at what we have proposed so that we could stop the position and stop the bleeding now. The N A S A has filed an answering affidavit. I don't want to go into the litigation, but in its answer, N A S A relies almost exclusively on the two thousand eleven findings that were made. And it does so in relation to what it identifies as four main elements, and I've, I've listed them here. Number one, it says it's used the role in method methodology and re- and ignored Sasso's complaints about the blank, the blanket use of that methodology. Because it says there are connections between pipelines, there are centralized planning and scheduling, there's interchangeability of pipeline products, and there is functional independence of different pipelines. Those are N A S A's reasons, and it appears that N A S A seems to think that it can ignore all of Sasso's submissions because those four things exist. But the, the twenty eleven findings do not apply in twenty twenty four. And, and, and we've now, if I turn the page, we can deal briefly with each one. In twenty eleven, there was a D J P. In twenty twenty four, there is an M P P that connects Durban to the inland. There is no connection between the C O P and the M P P. We understand that certain N A S A um personnel representatives have done an inspection. They will know. As you see in the, the yellow circle and the green circle, that the refined products are completely separate from the crude products in Durban. The pipelines are completely separate. And the M P P goes to Jamison Park in Khartoum. The C O P goes to Sasselberg in the Free State. There is no connection between the C O P uh in Sasselberg and the um and any white product pipeline. The C O P goes into the Natref refinery. So we would ask N A S A to look carefully because all that's going to happen is there will be another challenge. And there, there ought not to be if N A S A does a, a factual analysis and recognizes that in twenty eleven, there may have been a finding, but in twenty twenty four, no interconnection exists. Then in relation to planning and scheduling, there is no overlap between the C O P scheduling and the M P P scheduling. You can ask transnet the question because it has been dealt with in evidence in one of the trials. C O P planning is done and paid for by Natref. If we go back to this um picture and you have a look at the left-hand side, you will see that there are three stages below. From the single boiler muring on the left, the S P M, to prospecting, to Finland's, to Finland site one. All of that is Natref operated process. And Natref then schedules the slugs being uh injected into the C O P. It tells transnet and transnet conveys them. On the other side, transnet undertakes the tightlining um of the injections from the various um si- uh importers and, and its, its um customers. And it has to do all the scheduling, which is very complex because there are multiple grades of multiple products. In the C O P, there is one product and it goes to one place. In the M P P, there are multiple grades of multiple products that go to multiple places. And so when we talk about planning and scheduling, there is no overlap between crude oil pipeline scheduling and M P P uh scheduling. Now, one thing that, that if you, we're going to get into fairness and reasonableness in a, in a minute. But what N A S A needs to explain, if it believes that its, its position is justified, is why must nurses, why must Natref, Sasso and Total pay for its own scheduling costs, because it's got people that does its own scheduling, pays a hundred percents of those costs. Those costs are not paid by transnet and they are not included in the tariff. But the other customers, the importers, these are not South Africans, these are importers. They get to have their scheduling costs paid by transnet and then subsidized by S- Sasso and Total. And it's, that subsidy is almost up to fifty percent if you look at the volumes and the numbers. So the, the question then is why should there be an exact tariff? When Natref has to pay for scheduling in addition to the tariff, but its competitors do not. Then in relation to the crude and refined products being interchangeable, now in its affidavit at paragraph twenty seven point one point three, N A S A says most of the products in transnet's pipelines are interchangeable. Well, that, that's an acknowledgement that not all of them are, and that's because crude is not. Diesel, um, different grades of diesel, um petrol, they can be put in slugs into the same pipeline. But crude oil cannot. It's not interchangeable with refined product. And if crude, and crude oil does not travel in the M P P, and if white products are tra- are conveyed in the crude oil pipeline, you have to re-refine them on the other end because they are contaminated by the crude oil residue in the pipeline. So the third basis on which N A S A appears to proceed in its position has no factual basis in twenty twenty four. The crude oil pipeline is completely separate because it deals with a completely different product. The fourth reason that N A S A had used is that the C O P and the M P P are not functionally independent. Sorry, sorry, they, the reasoning of N A S A was that the C O P and the M P P are functionally interdependent and they serve a common market. That's the fourth reason that N A S A applied. It's in twenty seven point one point four of its affidavit. Now, we've already established that there is no connection between them and the scheduling is completely different. So there is no interdependence at a physical level or at a scheduling level. The connection, as we said, was between the COP. It's, it's from tanks at Natcos in Durban to the Natref refinery. And so there is no interdependence between the COP and any other transnet pipeline. Now, insofar as there is a serving of a common market, that common market is the white product market. If there is a common market, it's the diesel and the petrol market in the inland. But only approximately eighty eight point five percent of the volumes transferred by um Natref from Durban to Sasselberg serves that market. And so there is eleven and a half percent that does not serve a common market with M P P products. And so again, we say there is no factual basis in twenty twenty four to believe that the COP is functionally independent, interdependent with the M P P or any other pipeline. Now, so as a factual premise on which transnet um or on, on which N A S A has proceeded and appears to believe that it is entitled to proceed, all four pillars of N A S A's premise are flawed. There is no factual basis for N A S A to hold that view. And we submit that if N A S A were to proceed with its um with its tariff um approval on the basis of its discussion document, it would not have done its job, it would not have interrogated and made the necessary inquiries to justify the premise of its belief. Now, method, discussion has been had around the tariff methodology. And again, in transnet's application, they refer to eleven point five point seven of the tariff methodology. That transnet's application, and that's the tariff section of transnet's application, which is section fourteen, and N A S A's discussion document from paragraph four point nine, seventy nine, refers to an outdated N A S A methodology. The reference in its affidavit is, is a reference to eleven point five percent, point seven of the twenty eleven affidavit, um methodology. The reference in its affidavit is a reference to eleven point five point seven of the two thousand eleven methodology. That is the methodology that has, with respect, been copied and pasted each year when Transnet proposes its methodology, proposes its tariff and NERSA sets the tariff. And then we submit that there is no justification for using a deleted two thousand eleven tariff methodology. The current methodology is very simple. It was introduced into twenty fifteen. And it says, "NERSA will set tariffs based on the specific circumstance of a specific licensee while taking cognizance of the requirements of section twenty eight two of the P P A." Now, taking cognizance, it must, but those are obligatory, and we'll deal with them just now. So you can't do something and ignore the P P A. You've got to apply the provisions of the P P A and in your methodology, take the specific circumstances of the specific licensee. And that involves an inquiry into the factual detail. And we submit that if NERSA applies itself to this tariff application, it is required to do so in terms of the two thousand twenty three methodology. It has not done so in its discussion document. In relation to the twenty, into the section twenty eight two requirements, it's important to emphasize that the systematic methodology is just one of the six requirements that NERSA must take into account. It's peremptory. NERSA must take into account all six requirements when it is setting tariffs. What with respect, we read NERSA to say is that once they have adopted a systematic methodology called a rolled-in methodology, they need do no more. They can assume that everything else is taken care of. And with respect, that's not correct in law and it's not correct in logic either. Now, what we have proposed, and you will hear from Mr. Lipschitz in due course, is that it is a system where all six of those can be taken into account and Transnet can be protected as required by section twenty eight three so that the tariffs allow Transnet to recover its investment, operate and maintain the system and make a profit commensurate with the risk. At the moment, the NERSA approach and with respect, Transnet's application do not address the requirements in Roman two or Roman three and Roman six. Now, it appears that NERSA, and well, perhaps with respect, the committee of NERSA believes that short-term price savings for consumers is the only way in which you can protect, apply subsection six. With respect, that's not correct. If short-term decisions cause long-term problems that reduce access to affordable petroleum products, NERSA will have not applied the subsection six correctly. And so there must be a long-term view that consumers in the future will have access to affordable petroleum products. Even if they have to pay a little more now, that little more will promote access to affordable petroleum products into the future. Whereas if that little more is not paid now, the customers in the future will not be able to access petroleum products and certainly won't be able to access affordable petroleum products. So we deal now with fairness and non-discrimination. This is a factual question. NERSA must consider the assets, the services and the products relevant to each tariff proposed and then compare them before setting the final tariffs. The regulations require it too. They say it in express terms. So the specific focus is required when we, when NERSA undertakes this is to look at the COP and look at the M P P. Those are the two trunk lines that bring petroleum products from Durban to the inland and do the assessment. Compare the assets, the services and the products conveyed that's crude from Durban to Sasselburg in the C O P and refined product from Durban to Jamison Park in the M P P. And as the S C A confirmed, the Supreme Court of Appeal has confirmed in its judgment, differentiation based on sound reason does not amount to discrimination. So if there are material differences between the assets, the services and the products conveyed in the C O P and the M P P, there is no justification for charging the same tariff. You charge the same tariff for the same asset services or products. You charge different tariffs for different asset services or products. And as we set out in the following pages and in detail in the written submissions, there are material differences between these things. Just at a level of cost, now we recognize the rolled-in methodology has been adopted as a systemic methodology and to ameliorate the cost differential between the COP and the M P P. But if just at a matter of cost and you say, well, what is the importer receiving? And what are the Natref users receiving in assets? What kind of asset value are they getting? The capital cost of the M P P is more than three times, more than three hundred percent the cost of a COP. Now, the COP is old, but even if the COP were built today with current pricing and you were to do a matching exercise, the M P P is still twice as expensive as the COP. The M P P then has more infrastructural components, so the users of the M P P get more asset value in their service because they have storage, which the COP. So Natref users have to store it themselves in Durban and they have to store it themselves in Sasselburg. The M P P users get storage from Transnet. But they pay one tariff and now NERSA says they must pay the same tariff as the COP who pays for themselves. That's not fair. On the service differences, we've spoken about the scheduling. We've spoken about the complexity of mixing and slugs and different grades of different products. All of that takes significant additional resources within Transnet. The M P P user gets all of that additional service. The COP users don't get any. They pay for it themselves, scheduling and paying for their own scheduling. But for some reason, that material difference isn't considered important. And so no allowance is given for it. That's not fair either. And then we see the transport yield problem. Now, as I said earlier, the variation agreement was introduced in nineteen ninety one because of this problem. The fact that it's gone doesn't remove the problem. It requires the regulator to identify, recognize the problem and provide an alternative arrangement. All that the variation agreement was set, the differential that had to exist. Now it's for the regulator to recognize the need for the regulation and to apply it. The Constitutional Court has said that now that the variation agreement is terminated, Sassel and Total may have administrative remedies available to them. And this is the remedy that we are seeking to apply. Now, this drawing or this diagram should be relatively easy to understand. It shows that on the current tariff structure, the cost of getting to El Road from Jamison Park and Sasselburg is the same. Because if you take a thousand liters of petrol from Sasselburg and a thousand liters of petrol from Jamison Park, you will pay forty-three rand fourteen on the current tariff arrangement. So that's, you're getting petrol from two sources to the same place. It's fair that they have the same, the same price. But look below the line. Look at what it costs to get a thousand liters of petrol for importers, not a South African firm, importers from Durban to Jamison Park. They only pay four hundred and seventy-eight rand ninety-one. But for Sassel to bring, to deliver a thousand liters of petrol to El Road, it must bring one thousand one hundred and thirty liters of crude to Sasselburg because it can only produce eighty-eight point five percent of that to make a thousand liters. So Sassel pays five hundred and forty-one rand and fourteen cents. So the net cost in the blue and the green is Sassel pays five hundred and eighty-four rand twenty-eight to deliver a thousand liters of petrol to El Road. But its importers only pay five twenty-two. But what makes it worse is that the regulated fuel price is set with reference to the transport differential in the blue. So the recovery is only five hundred and twenty-two. Meaning that Natref, Sassel only gets, they must pay five eighty-four, but only recover five twenty-two. That's not fair or reasonable. In fact, that's discrimination. So while NERSA is correct that there is a common market in the inland, it's a white product common market that is supplied via pipeline. That white product common market is achieved by bringing imported fuel currently, and if the coastal refineries are resurrected to come from a coastal refinery, but currently it's importers. Bringing it up at five hundred and twenty-two rand. And it's supplied by Sassel, achieving eighty-eight point five percent of what it brings up to Sasselburg, delivering to Joburg. And the fair and reasonable and non-discriminatory approach, when you look also, not only at the transport yield problem, but also at the services, at the assets, the base, the base conclusion that NERSA has to come to is that the C O P tariff must be lower than the M P P tariff. So as a matter of principle, the C O P tariff must be lower than the M P P tariff. And the question then is, well, by how much? What, we submit the principle is unavoidable that to not charge a lower price would be discriminatory. And I now would like Mr. Lipschitz to deal with the solution. Just quickly before Mr. Lipschitz logs on, we would recommend the solution to NERSA. And we would also suggest to NERSA that it consider carefully whether it agrees to set tariffs for two years. Because the outcomes of the litigation and the circumstances in which Transnet finds itself may fester and create a much bigger problem if they are not factored into a tariff arrangement in the near future. I'll ask Mr. Lipschitz to now share his screen.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, is that, is that visible?
Yes, may proceed.
Should I make it bigger? Is that better? Can you see the big screen now?
Better. Proceed please.
Okay, so it's a very quick presentation. What we're trying to do here is to really show you how simple it is from a calculation point of view to apply a differential on the COP. The differential that you might want to apply, for instance, could solve the transport yield problem that Duncan just mentioned. And this doesn't speak to the other cost differences that Duncan spoke about in terms of the big capital cost differences as well as the service differences. But focusing in on the transport yield issue, how could you adjust tariffs to deal and resolve that issue? So what this slide does is it points out the kind of method. And in the next slide, I'll give you an example of that method. So first of all, NERSA determines allowable revenue as normal. That is in no way changed by the proposition. Secondly, NERSA determines tariffs for all routes as normal. And so the current tariffs that NERSA would have come to, it still comes to, it still calculates those exact tariffs in the exact same way. Except what we call those tariffs now is pre-adjustment tariffs. Because then in order to deal with this, in order to implement the differential, you then need to implement two further steps. And that is to identify the adjustment factor, which would be step three. And then to apply that adjustment factor to the COP tariff and the M P P tariff. So you'll see that what the adjustment factor is, we've called it alpha. And if you're looking to solve that transport yield problem, all that you would do to work out this adjustment factor is you would take the yield, which is eighty-eight point five percent in this case, and you would divide it by that formula that you see on the screen, which is the yield times the portion of trunk volume, which is sent up the crude oil pipeline plus the portion of volume that is sent up the M P P. So it's a very simple formula. And once you, once you put in those, those, those numbers, those variables, you then in point four can work out what the tariff is, the new post-adjustment tariff. And you take that adjustment factor and you times it by
You seem to be breaking on my side. I don't know whether it's for me or the problem is on your side.
I'm not sure. I think if I go on, if you can still hear me, the next slide will, you know, be, just kind of repeat the previous slide by giving an example.
Robert, could you turn your camera off? It might help.
All right, let's do that. How's that? Okay, I'm still, can you hear me?
Proceed.
Yep. Okay, so this is an example of what what we just described on the previous page. So again, the first steps, you determine your allowable revenue, then you determine your pre-adjustment trunk tariff, which in this case, for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, is seventy-one point two six cents. That's what NERSA have currently done. You then take into account three numbers, the yield at Natref, eighty-eight point five, the COP share of trunk volume, which we've just used an assumption here, is that it's forty-five percent, plays fifty-five percent. Okay, it could be different. And NERSA will have access to the most up-to-date projected volumes from Transnet as to how much volume will be over the COP versus the M P P. You take those three numbers, you plug it into the formula and you then produce the post-adjustment tariffs which you see at the bottom of the screen. And I'll just show you then what the, what the result is of that, of that, of that calculation. So you'll see in the big square, pre-discount or pre-adjustment, we have the seventy-one point two six cents, which is the same tariff on the COP and it's the same tariff on the M P P. Then post this simple adjustment, you then have a reduced COP tariff, which is sixty-six point five one, and an increased M P P tariff, which is seventy-five point one five. That keeps allowable revenue the same. So it doesn't, from an allowable revenue point of view, Transnet will still, even after this adjustment, earn the same expected allowable revenue. And that's what the first block on the right-hand side proves. You can kind of go through the maths. It's quite simple. The second big point on this slide is to say that the subsidization that the COP is providing to the M That the, uh, COP is providing to the M P P is, is maintained. No, ninety percent of that subsidization is maintained. And that's because if you look at what would be, uh, an, a fair tariff, if you were basing the tariffs on cost. The tariff would be, the, 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 the discount would be around seventy percent as opposed to the eleven point five percent. And the M P P tariff would go all the way up to a hundred and five cents. And so you see by using this methodology, we don't remove. The subsidization from the COP to the M P P. It's still there, it's just reduced by ten percent. But ninety percent of the subsidization remains in place. The other big implication, um, which is the final point on this slide. Is that, um, retail prices, because the M P P has gone up. And because retail prices are by regulation and market dynamics determined by the M P P. Retail prices will go up by three point nine cents. And the last slide, uh, that we would like to show you is, um. A slide which shows the variation in the retail inland price from month to month over the last two years. And you can see from the slide that, you know, it starts off in April twenty two, I can't quite, twenty one rand ninety. Then goes to twenty one rand eighty four, then it jumps up to twenty four rand seventeen, jumps up to twenty six rand, goes down to twenty five, et cetera, et cetera. And so the average variation in that price is ninety three cents a month. If you, if you just take the average of how much the inland petrol price is moving on a month to month basis. It's moving by ninety three cents, whereas this solution to the transport yield problem. Is only a four cent, uh, increase in the retail price. So it's really not so significant in the overall picture, but it does. Uh, provide a, a kind of a final, uh, uh, resolution to the transport yield issue. And the final point to note is that the four cent increase is also much smaller than other items. Than various items that are baked into the retail price, like the road accident fund, the fuel levy. The petroleum products levy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and yeah, that's it for me.
So the rubber, thank you very much. Um, from our side, I think, uh, I'll give the members of the panel to ask any question. Uh, it should be noted that it is in the normal course of business that the energy regulator reviews its rules, methodologies, approaches. And other instruments, uh, from time to time, or as the, the circumstances may require such to be done. Um, under the currently teacher's circumstances, NERSA is put on hold in these steps. Uh, to proceed with the public engagement on the review. Of the rolled in versus differentiated tariff approaches. Just want that to be noted. Um, uh, from, from my side, I would, uh, would, would have loved to, to hear what are the. The specifics around the, the figures put forth, uh, on the application itself, whether it's regarding the OpEx. Or, uh, the, the, the assets on the application itself, if we've got any of such questions. But let me give an opportunity to the members of the panel. Uh, I see a hand raised by Madam Masetti, if you may just weigh in, please. Uh, and from Sassel's side, please just note the question so that you can, uh, respond. Once the, the, or once the panel has concluded its questioning. Over to you, Madam Masetti.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair President, and thank you to Mister Easterman and, uh, Mister Lipschitz. Um, I do have some questions, uh, just for my own, uh, clarity, because we were not so. Close to some of the issues that you presented. And we do want to just get clarity so that we can understand what are your proposals and the basis of your proposals. Uh, uh, so that we are able to understand how we can handle. The application that is before us. So my questions are really aimed at getting some information and clarification. Now, I do want to first, um, uh, understand whether there's a challenge of. The relevant products market definition here, especially. When you're dealing with issues of interchangeability of the products or substitutability of the products. And also indicating that, um, the products are actually not the same. And there are no issues of interconnection between the different pipelines that are in question, the C O P. I still don't understand, you know, where, you know, whether Sassel, um, is utilizing all of the three pipelines. Uh, and maybe that is something that you can clarify. Uh, for us as members of the panel, so that we can better appreciate your argument. Whether Sassel does, uh, benefit from D J P. From M P P as well as from C O P. I think it becomes important for us to have a better understanding of that. So that we can be able to, to the extent that this perhaps some. Um, views of artificial, um, lack of interconnection or artificial interconnection. At least we can be able to, um, get a better understanding of, of that. So if Sassel can clarify whether, um, its products, um, go, um. Goes through C O P as well as M P P as well as D, D J P. Even if there is no physical interconnection. Of transporting the product, say, from one pipeline through to the other. Um, uh, in these three, you know, uh, pipelines. I just want to. You know, get into that kind of a detail because I honestly not understanding this and also being the, uh, uh. You know, the regulator that must understand as you have indicated that the regulator. Must base its decision on factual information happening in the market, and I fully agree with you, because that's what we are here for. But therefore it is important when you then state in this forum, that you clarify those details so that. If there is an overlap, let us understand the extent of that overlap and how the overlap arises. Um, rather than, uh, just indicating that NERSA is wrong. We do want to understand how it is wrong. And, um. The other thing that, uh, I wanted to understand is your proposal that. The transportation cost or tariff for C O P is supposed to be lower. But you don't, you explain all of the other technical things, but you don't explain why it has to be lower in s- in simple terms. And also looking at what NERSA is required to do, why it is supposed to be lower, what makes it lower? So if you can just assist us and remember some of us. Do not deal with these things on a day to day basis. So we do want to understand that. Um, uh, we also understand your sweeping, uh, statement that the committee seems to be making these kind of decisions. Um, without really, uh, indicating whether or not, um, you know, we had the level of detail. That you are, um, questioning and making an argument on. So if you can assist us, I think we can better understand, um, what the issues are. So if it has to be lower, what makes it lower? I what amount? I see the proposed model or calculation mechanism that you are proposing. It would be very difficult for NERSA to simplify that calculation mechanism. Without understanding the principles first, because it seems to me you're just trying to find. A solution in a, um, a sort of, um. I, i- in, in a simplified way by way of a calculation. But first of all, can you deal with the. Simple principles without dealing with the, all of the other things, the differences, overlap, interconnection and so forth. The, what makes it lower? The extent to which it has to be lower, factually. That could assist. And then we get to the adjustment to the extent that we have to adjust based on. Identifiable differences. Because then that is not clearly stated in terms of the, um, adjustment by a. Particular amount. And that amount is an amount that must be arrived at, not subjectively or being simplified by way of a calculation mechanism. But for us to see what makes it lower and why you must adjust by a certain amount. That for me is still a problem. Yes, you come up with an adjustment factor, but how do we know? The amount yielded by the adjustment factor is accurate and accounts accurately. For the due differentiation that NERSA must take into account. That is the part for me that I am, um, struggling with. With regards to the duration of the two year tariff cycle that, uh, Transnet has applied for. You only, um, you know, raised just a concern flagging just the, the, the issue of the duration, but you're not making a suggestion. And justified that suggestion, whether you are saying that, uh, it should not be two years, it should be one year. Or it should not be two years, it should be three years rather, so that it can give a better, you know, um, a tariff path and so forth. I'm not sure what exactly Sassel is suggesting here, if you can just clarify for us as to. Um, what, uh, Sassel is, uh, suggesting. Can I understand? Um, the argument with regards to the white pro-product common market segment? Wha- what, how does it, what is the, what, what, does it have any bearing on the application that is before us? What is the significance of this in relation to the application? So that we can understand even when we have to make certain adjustments, uh, in the cost that are requested by Transnet. Uh, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm, I'm not finding, um. Um, you know, the, the argument, uh, that will make it easy for us to say, you are raising this argument. And then this argument has a bearing on the application that is before us and all the issues that have been presented by Transnet. And therefore here is the concern around it, and that concern must find its way. To the cost that are proposed by Transnet, so that we can understand the essence of your argument. And the significant implications of your argument to enable us to make the necessary adjustments. Should we, uh, find, um, um, evidence and facts that will justify such, um, an adjustment? And that is the issue that is not coming up clearly. So it makes it difficult when you raise arguments. But those arguments are not linked back to the application in question. And how NERSA can look into the aspects and particulars of the application in question. If you can assist the regulator in, um, trying to find the significance of what you are, are raising. Lastly, Chair President, um, there is an issue of eleven four point five percent. Which, um, Sassel is arguing that it does not serve the common market in the M P P. Um, can you clarify, uh, this so that we can see how this may have been taken into account? In the application that is before us and how this can be treated by NERSA to the extent that. It will have, um, um, a bearing on the application and on the cost that, uh, Transnet. Um, have, um, um, uh, have, uh, have proposed to the regulator. Lastly, Chair President, is the. Is just to find out, uh, from, as, as, um, I mean, from, uh, Sassel's viewpoint. Why do you think that? Transnet, apart from NERSA now, because, um, NERSA can change its decision based on the facts, not change decision, but the approach. Um, on the facts, based on the facts, uh, at the time. So. Um, wh- why do you think Transnet, um, uh. Why do you think it's important? Or why do you think, um, uh, Transnet, um. The charges? I'm trying to frame this question, but it's a, it's a question around the one. A single tariff to everyone. Why do you think, uh, uh, are the reasons for Transnet to take that approach? Can, can we find out? Remember that NERSA approves a tariff at the maximum level. And therefore, um, we always say that discounts are applicable and such discounts must be. Um, must be granted within the, um, the scope of the. Um, price differentiation section of the Act. So that we avoid undue discrimination as we impose or grant a maximum tariff. So why do you think at the implementation level of that maximum tariff? Why do you think are the reasons for Transnet to rather charge a single tariff? As opposed to differentiating amongst its customers that are utilizing the pipeline? Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Madam Masetti. Um, as, as I alluded earlier on, that this being a matter that is also before. Being brought before the courts, make, uh, in terms of, uh, the really deliberating, matrimony, it's a kind of limiting. Um, uh, however, just on the. On, on the yield, is yield only for white products there or includes the black product? Pardon me for the use of color, knowing the history of this country and. The fact that we, we still sometimes get beset of incidences of racism. But, uh, if you can just, uh, uh, respond to that one only, uh, over to you, Sess.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, if, if I can deal with the opening comments, um, and also the comment that you, you made now in prefacing your last note. Um, Chair, we, we do not, and we, we s- suggest as a matter of law, um, the position is not correct to suggest that. Because there is a review of a, of a previous decision that NERSA should not be consulting. NERSA, uh, made, makes a different decision every year. The current decision doesn't have a precedent in the previous decision. And what is decided today is, is not cha- does not change what happened yesterday. Sassel contended and still contends that the decision that was made in twenty twenty three was reviewable and should be set aside. That does not mean that NERSA should not engage in respect of twenty twenty five. And the, the importance there is that if there is an overturning, it had, it will have a, a long term and cataclysmic effect. So we would suggest to NERSA that the correct way to deal with it is to consult. And to consult in depth to get the detail, so that the right decision can be made for twenty twenty five and further forward. Um, the, the position that Sassel has is that the promotion of, of, um. Administrative Justice Act, PADA, requires Sassel to bring a review within a hundred and eighty days, otherwise it loses its right to do so. And the fact that, that Sassel brought a review should not stop NERSA from doing its job properly in future years. So we would submit that the consultation process should be opened if NERSA is inclined to do so. Um, in Ms. Masetti's questions, if I can assist, there is one theme that persists in a number of the questions that I'd like to deal with it upfront. And that is the difference between the products that are conveyed in the C O P, which is the crude oil pipeline. And the products that are conveyed in the M P P, the multi-product pipeline. Crude oil, subject to some technical, uh, cleaning that goes on. Crude oil is effectively what comes out of the ground, Ms. Masetti. It's the black oil that comes out, you may see in the movies, that comes out of the ground. You cannot put that in a motorcar, you cannot put it in a tractor, you cannot put it in anything that the consumer needs to use. That is crude oil. It needs to go through a refinery before a consumer can use it. And that dirty crude oil goes up a pipe and makes the pipe dirty. So you can't put petrol and diesel in there, otherwise it will get dirty. And the, and so the result is that crude oil has to have its own pipeline. And in South Africa, the relevant pipeline we're talking about goes from Durban to Sasselburg, where there is a refinery. At that refinery. Sassel and Total through Natref, their joint venture company. Refines that, that crude oil and separates in the refining process. The bits that can be used in a tractor and in a, in a car, the diesel and the petrol. And it's about eighty eight point five percent of the volume that comes of crude, so eighty eight percent of the dirty product. And it's about eighty-eight point five percent of the volume that comes of crude, so eighty-eight percent of the dirty product can be used by the end consumer. And, and so when we talk about product, relevant product markets, I don't think anybody would dispute that crude oil is, is a feedstock. It is not in the same product market as petrol and diesel. It is a completely different product. It is a feedstock that goes into a refinery and can produce those things. But only eighty-eight point five percent, the numbers are available, this is an average over a few years. But only that percentage can be used to be sold to as petrol or diesel or aviation fuel to the jetline industry. The other fifteen percent becomes what is, sorry, the other eleven point five percent is what the the chairman referred to as black product, can be used in roads or it needs to be changed to be burnt in, in, in a turbine or burnt in a, to create energy. They, I understand they pour it on during load shedding, they poured it on the coal to try and get the coal to light up to start the coal-fired power station. So the, that's, you have to discard it, it's not petrol and diesel. You have to use it for something else, you have to create a different market. So when we talk about the common market that Transnet is supplying, Transnet doesn't carry bitumen in a pipeline. It only carries petrol and diesel and sometimes jet fuel, we understand, in the, in the multi-product pipeline. And then it has a completely separate pipeline that brings crude oil, the feedstock, to Natref refinery. And, and that is why there is a complaint, is that because it's a completely different pipeline, completely different product, and it is a feedstock where only eighty-eight point five percent of it can be used to compete with the MPP customer. It is not fair to charge the same tariff, the tariff must be lower. Now, that's, that's the transport yield issue. You asked whether Sasol uses all three pipelines. Sasol only uses one pipeline for crude oil. If trans, if Sasol uses, if Sasol asks Transnet to transport petrol or diesel, it, it may do, I don't think it does it often, but it may ask it to do so, but it'll then use the MPP and it will pay the same price that everybody else pays in the MPP. But when it comes to transporting crude oil, that crude oil will go through the crude oil pipeline. Transnet, Sasol will not transport petrol through the, through the, through the crude oil pipeline. So I hope that clarifies the, the difference between the product markets and the difference between the pipeline that is called the COP and the pipeline that is called the MPP. Now, you asked about the DJP, we understand and Transnet can confirm, but the DJP has been decommissioned. So the DJP is, is, is not available for conveyance. The only two trunk lines are the COP for crude oil only and the MPP for the, what are referred to as refined products or white products. Now, you, you asked whether the proposal that the tariff must be lower, you said, why in simple terms must it be lower? I, I think we could go on to the slide, but I would recommend to the committee to look carefully at the three Genesis reports that have been filed. There was filed in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Those reports deal in detail with the economic differences and why the pipeline tariff for the COP must be lower as a matter of principle. But let me list them quickly as major factors. The first is cost. The cost of assets, as Mr. Lipschitz said, it's about eight, about one-eighth or one-seventh, we understand, but the, the numbers are in the, in the, in the reports of the cost of the MPP. So, as a matter of cost on basic economic principles, if something costs less, you should pay less. That's as a matter of, of assets. As a matter of services, I've addressed at a high level, there are far more services given by Transnet to its customers on the MPP. And so it has more people, it has more systems, it has higher costs of operating costs. So I've dealt with the capital cost, now the operating cost. The operating costs for the MPP are significantly higher. So again, as a matter of basic economic principle, the, the cost of giving the service on the COP is lower than the cost, significantly lower than the cost on the MPP, and therefore the tariff that is charged as a matter of economics would ordinarily be lower. Now, what you said, why do we adopt the simple solution? Because we recognize that NERSA is concerned about the end consumer. And if the full discount was given for the cost, the capital cost and the operating cost, if that full difference was quantified, and it has been quantified, it's in the reports. The, as Mr. Lipschitz said, you would be giving a seventy percent discount. And instead of charging four cents more, as has been proposed, you would probably be charging over a rand more to the consumer. So over a hundred cents more, if you took into account all of those costs, operating costs and capital costs. And so, once we recognize that that might affect the access, the accessibility of affordable petroleum products to the customer, Sasol recognizes that, and it recognizes that NERSA has an obligation to take that into account. And so, we have said, the right, if you were to do it according to traditional tariff-setting cost-based methodologies, there would be this massive difference and a significant increase in the MPP tariff. But we recognize that it should be smaller. Now the question is, well, what indicators would be the relevant ones to reduce the impact on the consumer, but maintain fairness and reasonableness for the user? That is Sasol and, and Total. And as we've explained, and it's again in the detail in the reports, and we'd recommend them to you, the eleven point five percent has been identified as the differential that would place Sasol and Total in a position where it would be treated equally with its importer competitors. When it comes to Sasol, so when it comes to petrol and to diesel. And that's why we say, we, if we came and had a debate about cost, we would be entitled to a seventy percent discount. But recognizing the impact on the consumer, we submit that the minimum of eleven point five percent should be, the differential should be imposed to protect the consumer, but also be fair and reasonable in the way in which the tariff is set, set to the people paying that tariff. So I hope that that explains, number one, why as a matter of principle, the COP tariff must be lower, but also why as a matter of calculation, the eleven point five percent is the correct level or is a justifiable and reasonable level, a non-discriminatory level at which to set that differential. In relation to the two-year cycle, we are flagging it. We are raising the point because there is a very significant damages award already made, a judgment, and leave to appeal has been opposed. And within the next year, we expect that that will come to finality. And so there will be a significant liability on the facts, on the books of Transnet that has not been taken into account anywhere in the calculations. And if Transnet is liable for, it's almost ten and a half billion now, and by the middle of next year, it will be eleven and a half million, a billion. If, if that then lands on Transnet's books in the next year, we're not sure how NERSA would deal with it, and that's what we, we are flagging. Then I trust the fifth question in relation to the white market, sorry, the white product common market. I, I dealt with that in my opening remarks about that the white product is the final product. No white product is conveyed in the COP. There have been emergency, and emergency circumstances, diesel has been transported in there before, but in very low volumes and not for many years. And when it is transported, it has to be re-refined in Sasselburg because it's contaminated. You asked about the eleven point five percent, you asked to clarify how that works, I hope I've done that, to explain that it is not starting from zero and going to eleven point five percent. It's starting from seventy percent discount that would be justified on cost and giving the benefit to the consumer up to eleven point five percent where you can maintain fairness and non-discrimination. Then the seventh question was, why do you think that Transnet proposes one tariff for all? Well, Transnet says so. In its application each year, and it's just with respect to copy and paste, it says we are putting this in our application because NERSA has adopted this approach since twenty eleven. And so it's, NERSA made a decision in twenty eleven, Transnet recognizes that, NERSA just goes along with it, and then Transnet does the same because they did it before, and somebody goes along with it. And, and so Transnet has been placed in a position where, that's what NERSA has done. And so it's just said, well, if we do what we've done, what NERSA's done before, this is the outcome. So I'm, I'm not sure that it's Transnet's election as much as following what it has seen done before, but Transnet can answer that question. In relation to the question of NERSA approving maximum levels and allowing discount, we, we respectfully suggest that the economics of that is flawed, respectfully. The, Transnet needs all of its income to pay all of its costs. Its allowable revenue is, is there to pay a hundred percent of its costs. To suggest that it needs to discount to take these things into account is we've, we've argued it because that's what the law says, but what it does is it leaves NERSA with a hole, sorry, it leaves Transnet with a hole. Because as soon as it discounts, it's not able to cover its cost, and therefore it is not going to be able to do what it needs to do and which, which NERSA has recognized it needs to do. If there is a justifiable discount to be made, which we say there is, and as Mr. Lipschitz has explained, that discount must be built in to the calculation, so that when Transnet gives that reduced tariff, it still can recover its allowable revenue, otherwise we just perpetuate the problem. I hope that's addressed Ms. Masetti's questions. In relation to the chair's last question in relation to white products and black products, I think I have answered it. But Chair, the eighty-eight point five percent is the average yield of petrol, diesel, and after the white products over, Mr. Lipschitz will correct me, but it's in the documents, it's the last three or five years. I, I trust that that has addressed, I trust that, that has addressed the committee's questions.
Yes, the, 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 the question on the, thanks, first of all, thanks for the responses, but the question on the white products, it's, remember that the, the regulation includes heavy-fuel oil and, and, and the other gang, so to say. To say, to, to then look at that aspect, not just the white products only. I'm saying how do you take care of, when, when the yield includes that, what does it go up to? You may not be able to answer it here and now, but I think there should be consideration of that in terms of you providing or Genesis, or, 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 or your, your consultants responding in that regard by way of written com, augmentation of your responses within the next seven days. I will allow Madam Masetti to weigh in. Just briefly, I understand that you are, you are way over time in terms of the schedule, but we need to deal with these matters.
Thank you, Mr. McKeezer, thank you for the opportunity, and thank, and, and thanks to Sasol for the responses, I think they, they are very useful. And it's a matter of us really dealing with those factual issues and also the issues of the product market definition and the analysis thereof, I think that will be, become important. May I just find out from Sasol whether Sasol is of the view that there is still room for NERSA to, 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 to deal with you know, ways or options of taking into account appropriate differentiation in scenarios that will show how Transnet could recover the revenue that it, it requires. Do you believe that there is still room for NERSA to undertake that kind of analysis? Provide some scenarios, scenarios that would take into account due and appropriate differentiation within what the law allows, also taking into account the SCA's judgment, and then may come up with scenarios showing how Transnet could consider recovery, the necessary revenue. Yes, it is not NERSA who must come up with the specific revenue, because NERSA cannot apply on behalf of Transnet. But we are trying to find or to show that we are also hearing the input that you are bringing forth to NERSA. And as you have indicated earlier on, that NERSA simply ignores SCOM's input, but I don't think that is the intention, and I think that is a matter of unpacking the input that you provide and also making workable suggestions as to how such input can be put as part of the process, to the extent that you may want to make proposals to NERSA or on how that input can be, it can be taken on board. Or I do believe that it should be Transnet that then come up with ways in which it can improve its revenue and the recovery of the revenue that it requires by taking into account differentiation, of which differentiation it must brought before the energy regulator as part of this consultation process. That's what I would like to understand. It might be a long-winded, but I think it's a very simplified and, 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 and a, a question that seeks to sort of understand what can be done with regards to what you have suggested. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. If you may just respond briefly, if you need to augment your, your, your responses, just send a written response. I'm just conscious of the, the, the time without necessarily sacrificing the quality of the engagement. Over to you, please.
Thank you very much, Chair, we're very appreciative of the constructive engagement that we've had with the committee. Chair, we, we have, just to remind the, the committee that NERSA in its decision in twenty twenty-three indicated that it would open a consultation process, and we would highly recommend that, that we do so, even if it's at the beginning of, in the middle of January, when everyone get back from holiday. But, but if there is a, a direct engagement, and, and there may be then a public element to it that needs to comply with the, the process, but we would be certainly available and, and willing to assist in, in explaining and, and helping NERSA to find a, a solution that meets its requirements. Obviously, Transnet would be part of that and to, to then take that further. So we, we would be very happy to assist. In relation to the impact on, on Transnet, just to remind the committee, if I may, that the obligation on NERSA, so it's not Transnet that sets tariffs. NERSA sets a tariff and it does so per pipeline. The Act specifically says NERSA will set a tariff for a petroleum pipeline. So there is no requirement from NERSA to set a maximum for everything and for Transnet to discount off it. The requirement on NERSA is to set a tariff for each The requirement on NERSA is to set a tariff for each pipeline. And there is a list of pipelines that NERSA publishes in its decision each year, and it sets a tariff for each pipeline. Now, the way in which it's been conducted up until today and to what SASSL has complained about is that it has adopted, NERSA has adopted the Roldan approach and its general approach, and then applied a blanket conclusion to all pipelines. And so it it it, what we're suggesting is that when it does its calculation, as Mr. um Lipschitz has explained, it does the steps which it currently does, and then it does the adjustment so that when it gets to the per-pipeline tariff, it can set pipeline tariffs as have been calculated and that will then achieve the allowable revenue that Transnet requires. That's how the maths will work out. And so we would be certainly open to to NERSA and to to Transnet to assist perhaps in explaining how we see it and assist in 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 formulating um, the the proposal so that we could get it right as soon as possible. Yeah, okay. Um, I hope, thank you very much, Chair, for the indulgence in the time and to the committee, Ms. Masetti in particular, for the constructive approach.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I see that Mr. Lipschitz wants to say something, just a minute for for me, for you, please.
Just, just a technical point, um, the presentation that we sent yesterday had a few typos. So we'll send through the presentation that I presented today i- in in a little bit.
Uh, thanks for that, and and for the record, by the way, there was a mention of SCOM, uh, the intention was to say, uh, uh, SASSL. Uh, it just that, you know, we've been dealing with SCOM for some time now, so there was just a slip of the tongue there. Um, all right, uh, no, thanks a lot. Uh, as I said, within the next seven days, if you need to amend anything, please uh do uh submit to 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 NERSA. Uh, we closing off this uh part, and I would just like to give uh Transnet an opportunity just to uh round off on what, on the, on the uh public hearing of today. And then I would uh follow. Over to you, Madam Naidi.
Uh, Chair, on behalf of Transnet Pipelines and the executive that is present today, we just like to thank the regulator for the opportunity to have presented today and the opportunity to have answered the questions that regulatory members have. And we will certainly augment those answers as well as the questions that um you've specifically asked us to give you in writing, Chair, by in seven days, oh, before seven days. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very, very much, Madam Naidi, and I think that you noted that some of the things that have been uh 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 responded to by 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 SASSL somehow touches on 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 you in terms of uh, uh, your responding to that or your views around that. I think in that response, if we can also be overarching or or mean like be broad enough to cover everything, it would be appreciated. Okay, then, uh, I see you nodding your head in agreement. Um, we'll then uh proceed to 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 closing uh this uh public hearing. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank uh Transnet, uh, SASSL, uh, uh, as well as um, their their consultant, to thank the members of the panel, uh, management, working on the technical teams, working on the various aspects of um this tariff application. Um, as we always say, that you don't have the monopol of wisdom and hence you need to consult and do everything that is in line with our legislation to have a hundred percent compliance and also to do things uh uh in the interest of the public, uh, taking due regard of consumers' interest as well as the sustainability of our licenses. With that, I would like to thank you for the cooperation, thank you also to the secretariat of this subcommittee, uh, for the, for all the assistance uh in the background. Uh, from my side, I would just like to say thank you to all of you and wish you pleasant summer holidays. Um, to those that who are not going to be interacting any further and see uh best of luck for the future and you go and be safe, especially this time of the year. Uh, the mi- the this public hearing then stands adjourned. Thank you.
Chair person?
Oops. Thank you, Chair.
Chair person?
Thank you.
Thank you, cheers.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, members, thanks, everyone, goodbye.